Good evening. I'd like to resume the regularly scheduled board meeting, July 15th, 2021. We'll start with the report of the superintendent.
Thank you for President McAvoy. Welcome to the July Board Meeting. So good to be back here in the lecture hall. So good to be back in person and be maskless. Thrilled about that. I hope everybody's enjoying summer. It's been a bit hot, but I think a good summer nevertheless. Now that we've had our high school graduation and our middle school promotion, I'd like to once again extend a tremendous congratulations to all of our graduates, and I hope that they're going to come back and visit us. And congratulations to our eighth graders, our future class of 2025. So the graduations were well attended. I think the parents were thrilled to have been there without any restrictions. We didn't graduate in July like we did last year. So I'm just going to talk about a few things that have been going on this summer. For the first time, we welcomed close to 300 students to our Summer Enrichment Academy. Our Summer Enrichment Program, I should say. It's our very first. It includes an academic enrichment academy, a summer music program, bridge to algebra classes, and a high school credit recovery program. So I want to thank our new Assistant Superintendent and welcome Mr. Zalinski to our first meeting as Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. He played a huge role in getting that program off the ground along with District Supervisor Mrs. Amos, the entire administrative team, and of course, to all of our teachers who are teaching the program. We couldn't have done it without any of them. And again, having close to 300 students attend our enrichment program is just amazing. In addition to that, we welcomed over 275 students last week to our Extended School Year Program. And this is a program that has been running for quite some time. Last year it was remote, so this year we welcomed our students back in person. Our Extended School Year Program allows our students to practice their social skills along with their academics. And so when we talk academics, we're talking about the fact that they're reinforcing what they learned last year and preparing for the academics that are going to come at them in September. So that's going to run well into August. Another thing that I wanted to talk about, and this is posted on our website, is that for the first time, the Ocean County Health Department is hosting a COVID-19 vaccine clinic. So that's going to take place next week, July 21st, from 3 o'clock to 7 o'clock at Milpon School. All three vaccines, so the Moderna, the Pfizer, and the Johnson &amp; Johnson will be offered. Mr. Zalinski, correct me if I'm wrong, first come, first served basis?
No, they should have enough for everybody, and you can choose which vaccine you want.
Okay.
It'll be at Milpon, and there's no appointment required.
So no registration necessary?
Nope, just show up.
And again, the...
Twelve and over.
That's right, 12 and over. And the flyer is posted on our website. So again, July 21st, from 3 o'clock to 7 o'clock at our Milpon School. So I don't have any other comments to make, other than to wish our families and our students a happy summer. It's hard to believe, mid-July already. Goes fast after the Fourth of July. And at this time, I am going to turn it over to our Board Attorney Cindy Dev, who is going to do a school ethics presentation.
Thank you. And I need Tom, Tom Lyle, is he here? Oh, okay. Thank you. And I need the keyboard, so I can... Perfect. Yeah. In front of you, thank you, Dr. Clark, for the introduction. For the people in the audience who may not know me, again, my name is Sanu Dev. I'm an attorney with the law firm, McKay, Hart &amp; Skatcher. And I'm the Board Attorney, and I'm doing a refresher course on school ethics training for school board members and role of school board members. And it's kind of nice that we have a little bit of an audience, because I think it's a good way to educate the community as well in terms of what is the role of school board members. You know, July 1 started officially a new school year, so it's a great way for everyone to keep up to date on, you know, what you can and can't do as a school board member. Everyone should have a hard, I mean, the board member should have a hard copy of the presentation, so feel free to take notes. Also reflect on it afterwards, but it's also on the big screen in front of you. So what governs a school board member's conduct? There are two specific statutes that tell you what you can and can't do as a board member. The first is the School Ethics Act that I have printed out for you. That primarily deals with conflicts of interest, you know, things you might not be able to vote on because you have some sort of business interest or other toward, other sort of interest, or you have a family member that's involved in something that precludes you from discussing a particular issue or voting on a particular issue. That, that's really the School Ethics Act. The Code of Ethics is what we're going to be talking about today. They're really the nuts and bolts of, you know, what you should be doing, what you can't be doing as a board member on a day-to-day basis. And you'll see in the Code of Ethics, your handout, I've highlighted four of the sections that we're going to cover today, because I think that is what I have seen in my experience with working with boards of education is where they sometimes trip up. We don't want anybody to be in violation of the School Ethics Act, so those are the ones that I'm going to focus on. And that's really the case law that's come out regarding the School Ethics Act has focused on these particular provisions. So I thought it was very important that, you know, that's our emphasis for tonight. So the first section of the School Ethics Act that we're going to, sorry, the School Code of Ethics that we're going to be talking about is NJSA 18A 12-24.1C. And this is, "I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. And I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them." And this is, I think, like, the primary source of what a board member does. You are policymakers. If you think of like a big organizational chart, you're, you're the overseers, making sure that the policies are sound, that you're doing the big picture planning. That's why you have strategic planning, you have goal setting. And that is your ultimate role, is to be policymakers, big planners, and appraising. And it says that you have to consult those who will be affected by them. Who carries out the policies in your district? Primarily your administrators and the staff. And that's why you have a team of administration that starts with the superintendent, assistant superintendents, the business administrator, and other administrators that will have to carry out those policies. And that's why they should be working very closely with you. And this is very important, that the implementation of the goals and policies are done by the district employees. Like, again, the administration is who you have entrusted to complete that process, to make the decisions, to get to the big goals, to get to the big picture. Board members cannot be involved in the administration or the implementation of the policies that the board develops. And, you know, this is sometimes hard for community members to grapple around, because they think that, you know, board members are all-encompassing, all-empowering, and they get into the nitty-gritty of every single thing that goes on in the district, and they're not. And, and this is what the, the Code of Ethics says. You cannot get involved in the implementation of the policies and the goals. You set them, you have the big-picture vision, but board members are not getting involved into the day-to-day development of those. Section D says that "I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run." Again, you're, you're a board that oversees the, making sure that the district is run, run well, but you're entrusting the day-to-day operations to be overseen by the superintendent. That's why you hired a superintendent to administer the schools. And the superintendent has a team of administrators, and then it trickles down to, you know, building principals, who are also administrators, and then the teachers and everybody else that works in the school district. And that's who gets involved in the day-to-day operations. That is the, you know, superintendent, business administrator, assistant superintendent, et cetera. The board members, they have to make sure that they are not acting unilaterally, because a board can only take action when they're sitting here at a duly-noviced public meeting. There's a, a majority of the board here, and by proper vote and following the, the rules for having board meetings and taking action is only when they can vote. An individual board member does not have the authority to bind the board on anything. And that's another, I think, misconception that some people might have, is that, you know, if you're a board member, you can, you can make all the decisions, you can do everything, and, and that's just not true. It has to be the full board sitting here. And this is a good time to talk about those two sections, C and D, regarding board versus educator responsibilities. The board, again, is responsible for policymaking and goal-setting. And the administrators and educators are responsible for implementing. And that's why administrators administer, not the board. So if you have any confusion about who administers school, it's going to be the administrators. Section E of the Code of Ethics talks about recognizing that the authority rests with the Board of Education and that board members will make no personal promises or take any private action that may compromise the board. And you might be thinking to yourself, well, what does private action mean? We're going to get into some of the cases that talk about private action. But generally, you know, you cannot act unilaterally as an individual board member. Yes, you know, people in the community are going to recognize you as a board member, but you don't have authority until you meet together as a full board. And you have to be careful about making statements or conducts that could compromise the board. You never want to, you know, make a representation that this, something that you're saying is, is board action, is, you know, something that is a decision of the board when it may not have been. Section I of the Code of Ethics says, "I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties." And that essentially means that you are not going to interfere with the jobs of school personnel, whether it be, you know, a teacher, to a principal, to a central office administrator, that you are going to allow them to do their jobs. And that includes not giving direct orders to school personnel. Ultimately, the superintendent is responsible for the running of personnel decisions, making recommendations regarding personnel. Superintendent can give orders to certain employees, but board members cannot. And again, it also means that board members cannot be involved into, into the day-to-day activities, because the daily operations of the school falls within the purview of the school personnel, the people who are there to run the school buildings, to run the classrooms, to run the district. Section J talks about referring complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer. That's your superintendent. And so, so that means you, there's a chain of command. If a member of the community, a staff member, et cetera, approaches a board member and says, you know, "I have a question about X, Y, and Z," or like, "I don't like this, I want it to be a different way," the correct response from a board member is, well, I will refer that to the superintendent, because I am obligated to do that under the Code of Ethics. And sometimes that might be frustrating for the community member, because they think that if they go directly to an individual board member, that they're going to get a solution immediately. But that's just not how it works. It has to go through the superintendent. Personnel matters. A board is not permitted to evaluate an employee of the board except the superintendent. And that is in a particular statute that's listed on there, that the superintendent must make the recommendation regarding personnel issues. And then the board, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is required to vote on the appointment, removal, transfer of an employee. And the case law that has interpreted this statute has even made it broader, that pretty much anything touching upon personnel has to be brought before the board upon the recommendation of the superintendent. And so, you know, that means, you know, an individual board member can't just say, well, you know, "I want to, I want to employ X person for this position." It has to be done through the superintendent. And evaluating an employee would be considered micromanaging the schools and undermining the responsibilities of the, of the superintendent. So board members in the board, they cannot get into evaluating employees. Again, that's the function of the superintendent, because the board has delegated that responsibility. And, and really, the statute has authorized the superintendent to take on that role and that function and that responsibility for the board. Board member cannot, and this is important, because, you know, a lot of what, being a board member is what you can't do. And you can't micromanage, can't get into the nitty-gritty of the, of the weeds of what's going on in the day-to-day operations of the school district. Can't be involved in the day-to-day decision-making of the district. Again, if you go back to the, the first slide that I had regarding what's the role of a board member, they, the board members are policymakers and goal-setters. So if you're getting into the, the nitty-gritty about, you know, how many pencils are going to be ordered in a, in a particular classroom, that's going to be considered micromanaging. That's a decision that most likely a building principal is going to make. And so things of that nature, when you're, when you're getting, when you're going down, like the, you're trickling down, and the more detailed you get, that's going to be considered micromanaging. Cannot direct school employees to complete certain tasks. We talked about that already. Board members cannot act unilaterally. They only have authority when they sit down together as a full board. And they cannot evaluate an employee except for the superintendent. Some cases that are important to review. This is a case out of Delsie Regional Board of Education. A board member who, you know, would argue that he had good intentions, was going to the secretary at the high school, asking for the SAT score reports of students. That's going to be a big no-no. A board member does not have the authority to do that. And asked for the score reports, his guidance secretary felt uncomfortable about that. Board member said, "Well, the previous person in this position always gave it to me, so how come you're not giving it to me?" That's not a reason to do something is because somebody else did it before. If it was, was wrong, it's wrong. The board member also at a, one of the, one of the sports teams was playing in the high school gymnasium, and it happened to inspect the boys' locker room, that thought that there were some deficiencies in the way that the boys' locker room was maintained, and then proceeded to instruct staff on, you know, how students should be supervised in the locker room, how the locker room should be maintained. And the School Ethics Commission determined that these were violations of the School Ethics Act, particularly Section D that talks about ascertaining the district's needs, that it was considered administering and micromanaging the school. So that's an example of micromanaging and how that's going to get board members in trouble. Next are two cases out of West Essex Board of Education and Perth Amboy Board of Education. These involved board members who met with union representatives to discuss union concerns without the knowledge of super, of the superintendent. This was not an instance where the parties were in active negotiations, and there were committees that were meeting prior to this particular issue. It was just that the, for whatever reason, it came to be known that the union had some concerns that they wanted to be discussed. A couple of board members took it upon themselves to meet with these union representatives, didn't tell the superintendent, proceeded to meet with them, and then they made some decisions on what should be done with those concerns. And the School Ethics Commission said, "Nope, that was completely inappropriate. That violates the School Ethics Commission, because that action is beyond policymaking, planning, and appraisal." That it was, again, this was an instance where there was a complaint brought to their attention, and the proper way to have handled that was to bring it to the superintendent's attention to be addressed, because that particular section of the Code of Ethics, Section J, talks about having to bring complaints to the superintendent. And because, you know, this portion of the board decided to meet with the union representatives without the authority of the full board, it was also considered to be unilateral action. So we want to make sure that we're not, you know, behaving in this type of way. The next one is another Perth Amboy case involving a group of board members who decided that they're going to do an investigation of an employee and the buildings, because there were some rumors that a vice principal was covering up sales of alcohol on school grounds, which is a big concern. If there's rumors about this happening, it should be investigated. But board members are not the ones to do the investigation, because again, board members are up here. They're, they're the policymakers, they're the goal-setters. They, they look from the top. And the people who should be doing the investigations are the administrators, building principals. Whoever else would be involved in that particular issue. And so that's the type of thing that's going to get board members in trouble, that you, you can't go investigate every single thing that might be a concern. It has to go through the administration. And particularly, what the School Ethics Commission said is that these board members failed to support school personnel in their important task of assuring that through the use and enforcement of written policy and procedure, that, you know, they, they were entrusted to ensure that the, the things that were going on in the building were appropriate or not appropriate, and take the appropriate action to address the concern. And, and it also, the School Office Commission also said that this particular action would fall into the realm of micromanaging and getting into the day-to-day functions and responsibilities of the school district. That's the responsibility of the school personnel, not board members. And finally, there is a case called Derrick's versus Shiovani. And this was a particular case where a board member was too much involved in the personnel decisions and the personnel process of a particular position in the district. In this particular case, it happened to be a high, a school principal position. And the board member had taken it upon himself to, you know, draft all of the questions that would be used in the hiring process, created the rubric for the hiring process, took the, got the, somehow got a handle of the resumes, and didn't share them with the superintendent immediately, but instead gave them to other board members. That's going to be considered micromanaging, interfering with the responsibilities of the school district personnel, and that they were too involved in the personnel decisions and functions that should have come through the superintendent's office. What is the role of the board president? I think, you know, sometimes there is a perception that the board president has more authority than the rest of the board members. And board presidents, you know, has one vote, just like everybody else on the board. Board president cannot micromanage district operations. That's not the role of a board president. The board president presides over the board meeting, is the leader of the meeting. They are entrusted with appointing board members to serve a term on board committees, one-year terms. And in terms of communication with the full board, that responsibility is actually with the superintendent, because the board hires the superintendent to be the, almost like the CEO of a school district. You know, and obviously, we're not a, a private institution, but, you know, that, that is the person who is responsible for communicating the information regarding the district operations and what may be going on in the schools on a day-to-day basis. That's, that's not the board president's responsibility, because the board president can't get involved in the micromanaging of the district operations. So what do you do if, and we talked about this a couple of slides ago, somebody, you know, you run into them at the store, and they say to you, like, "Oh, you're a board member, right? You know, I, I heard like this was going on, so, but I don't like it. What are you going to do about it, board member?" And, you know, the answer is, you know, "Thank you very much for your concern, your comment. I am obligated to take this to the superintendent. I'm bound by the Code of Ethics, and I am going to refer that complaint to the superintendent." Same thing about, well, you know, "Did you hear about X, Y, and Z?" And it's, it's the same thing. Well, thank you very much for letting me know. And, you know, my role as a board member is not to get involved in every single thing that happens in the school district. I am not supposed to know all the day-to-day operations, because that's what the administrators are doing. And I also want you to be aware that there is a board policy that talks about referring the concern to the superintendent. So you have both the School Ethics, Code of, sorry, the Code of Ethics, as well as the board policy that tells you you should be referring complaints to the superintendent. And then what do you do if, you know, you as a board member, as a concerned member of the board, have a specific question or concern about a project or a policy, et cetera, a goal, because that's what you're responsible for, policy setting and goal-setting. The recommended protocol, and this, you know, I discussed with the superintendent as well as the board president, is to email the board secretary, you have a board secretary, that is Mr. DeGeorge, and copy the superintendent and board president on the issue that, you know, you have, and that, you know, it will get addressed in the appropriate channels. And you always want to make sure that you're not involving yourself in the day-to-day business or the decision-making of the, of the district, because that's going to be a violation of the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics, that you're not directing school employees to complete certain tasks, because that's going to be a violation too. That you're not acting unilaterally, and you're not evaluating an employee. So just be very mindful of those things whenever, you know, you want to approach administration or another board member, that you're, you're not getting involved in some of those things that I put out there, because those seem to be the most common ways that board members get tripped up with the Code of Ethics. And that is my presentation for tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dev. At this time, we will have public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment shall raise his or her hand, and when called upon, state their name, address, or affiliation, and intention to make a statement. Comments shall be addressed to the board president. Comments shall be made on one issue at a time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. No audience, no audience member will be recognized twice until all who wish to comment have been recognized. So at this time, would anybody like to comment?
My name's John Bernier. And I'm representing the students, the coaches, and the parents of the wrestling community, as well as the SEL group, and...
Could we have your address, please? Just your street?
My street? Old Cuthbert Road.
Thank you.
And what we'd like to do is, we've raised funds to make a donation to the school to convert the present old shop, auto shop area, to a wrestling room, as well as an area for the SEL community to decompress. And so, in, in looking at the, the structure, my posture is I've worked for the NFL and decommissioning and construction, particularly the Rams out of LA. I've worked for a lot of school districts, universities, in the capacity of construction management oversight as an owner's rep type of role. And I was asked by... Um, and I was asked by by the coach and the community here to help facilitate this. I've had the opportunity to look at the space and um the conversion of that space um can be totally handled by certified contractors in New Jersey, um that are willing to donate their time and their talent, as well as the business community, the wrestling community, both from a national platform and a local, regional platform, because this is the success of your program, the last several years, I believe, the last three years you've been to the sectionals, um compared to the historical past, it's been quite a a record of success. I was reading about your tradition of pride, tradition of excellence. I think that program in particular represents that well. We all know the value of the scholar athlete as far as discipline and 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 growth and keeping the students off the street and focused in the community. So we would like to present a plan to renovate that space. Uh, it'll be no cost to the district. You know, we'd like to, you know, I I recently have heard unfortunately that they have shut down the room for some reason, so are you able to extrapolate on what, why?
Yes, we will. Um, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. DeGeorge to tell you about the oil.
Okay.
Right, so um Monday, Tuesday, we had a, we had a discussion, a committee, where it was, the the subject was, uh, broached that there's a possibility that's can't be, that cannot be overstated, that there uh in converting from the auto shop to a wrestling space, that there may have been some things left behind, uh, we don't know that. We're in the process of determining that, and the smart thing to do really is, until that determination is made, whether or not there is an issue or not an issue.
Right.
Uh, it's just safe to really just.
Okay, and what's the timeframe tied on that in regards to making that determination?
Yeah, and then you and I have spoken, right?
Right, sure.
Before, yes, and I appreciate you being here. Uh, the 22nd of July, uh, certified, EPA certified, personal compound determined.
Sure.
Want to talk and uh issue a report.
Okay.
Give us guidance as to what is and what is not happening.
Okay, now, the remedy if, you know, not to be, you know, hypothetical, but according to, if it's a positive reading on the soil sampling and whatnot, the remedy of that is going to take some time, you have that experience in with this space in New Jersey particularly?
Yeah, in my experience, uh, not only here, but elsewhere, the answer to the question is, it depends on whether an issue exists and the severity of the issue. I mean remediation, uh, the breadth and the scope and the timing of it depends 100% on what we're dealing with.
What discovery.
And I, and I don't know.
Right.
It could be nothing at all.
Right.
So I don't know that.
If if the case being that, you know, the wrestling community needs to engage in training and performing on a schedule, obviously, is there a alternative site within, like the auxiliary gym or some other site on campus that would facilitate their utilization as a team?
Right now, for the time being, Cafeteria North is uh the designated site for uh these activities. Oh, sorry.
Five minutes.
You you may talk again after everybody else talks.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Would anyone else like to speak? Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Paul Graham. I am at K Drive East.
At where, sir?
K Drive East. Uh, my background is knowing Coach Bonititis and his family for 45 years. Uh, I've been involved in the wrestling community for that long also. What we do uh with our company, uh, it's called Relocation Project Managers, we support a lot of wrestling programs locally, regionally, and nationally. We've done work with approximately seven or eight in the New Jersey State, high schools, middle schools, junior colleges, uh, and then also colleges nationally. I'm president of RPM and uh we will coordinate uh the funds that'll come forward. Uh, John is our is our senior construction management individual. Uh, so, so it'll, John will help facilitate a lot, just to give you an idea from a team perspective, John will facilitate a lot of the construction, he has that knowledge. Uh, I'll coordinate a lot of the the funding that will ha- have to happen and coordinate some of the additional needs for the rooms, for the wrestling rooms, all the mats, will absorb all the costs for all the mats, uh, if there's anything additional to those mats will help also. Um, the other team member is Anthony Papeneri, he's one of the owners of Quad Construction. Uh, I've worked with Anthony for about 35 years on projects. Uh, he's, he's worked on projects for Coach Bonititis also, he will do a lot of the implementation of the construction that John will oversee, uh, and Anthony Papeneri is also a family too. Uh, he's actually uh Coach Bonititis' uncle and has come forward also to present his his company and uh his resources to try and make it happen. So that's a little bit of that background. Some of the other organizations that that have visual on this potential project is uh WIBN, that is the Wrestlers in Bid Business Network, it's a national network uh that has approximately 19 chapters throughout the country. Uh, I'm part of the Philadelphia, I'm on the board of the Philadelphia branch, uh, and we've or we've already allotted funds for the Lacey Wrestling Team Program, uh, to pay for things that will be dictated by Coach Bonititis. Um, we are also working with him to try and help, uh, I'm in a subcommittee, the Inclusivity Subcommittee, uh, I do a lot of work with uh women's and girls wrestling, and we know that his program is also uh starting that next year. So we're going to be supporting him in those roles and educating some of the young ladies that are in those roles here, uh, to grow that. Uh, at this point, uh, the majority of the growth that's happening in wrestling is with girls and women. Uh, so that's also part of what we'd like to do. Uh, I'm on an advisory board with the executive director of the National Wrestling Coaches Association, which is the NWCA. Uh, they are really the 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 main organization that drives and manages amateur wrestling in the United States. Uh, Mike Moyer is the executive director, I wrestled in college with him, uh, and we've, he, they have full knowledge of the Lacey Program, and they also uh are ready to present some funds to them for what they need to also, for whatever, again, Coach Bonititis and uh the community needs. So, you know, that's just a little bit of the background, the team, where will some of the funding come from, uh, how will, how we will interact. You know, our group has already donated to the program uh for uh equipment that they've needed, so it's not, it, we're not new to it, we're not new to uh the community. Uh, real quick, my understanding is that they have the junior program and the middle school program that at at this point has 130 wrestlers in it, the high school is somewhere near 50, uh, they're extrapolating for next year, it's it's a phenomenal program. And again, since uh we we see so much nationally and regionally, um, it's uh, I've been to a number of board meetings that had some conversations like this, I've never seen this many people here, so um I'm sure you're extremely proud of your program that's here for, as John mentioned, your tradition of pride and excellence, but I've never seen this many student athletes and parents here, so that's, it's very gratifying, uh, which invigorates me even more to know that we're really looking to try and do what we can do to give them the the tools to really to exceed, so. We're here, John's here, to support the board with the with the decisions that they have, uh, and do whatever we can to try and, again, you know, support your community and then support your people, okay?
Thank you.
Any questions?
Um, no, I just want to let everyone know that we have been discussing the wrestling room and the renovation the last couple months with the facilities. Um, Coach did come to a curriculum meeting.
Great.
A few months back and did a presentation, and um we will be getting the committee together, the Finance and Facilities Committee, with Coach coming up in the beginning of August, and with our architect and a few other key um personnel that Dr. Clark asked. Okay, so we will be discussing it in a committee forum with the key players. You're welcome. Any other public comment at this time?
Hello, my name is Lisa Granato, um, I live on Plumstead Court in Lenoka Harbor. And I'm speaking tonight as a parent, as well as a licensed clinical psychologist in private practice in our town. I have seen firsthand in my home and in my office what the children in our town are going through. I understand and recognize that the past 16 months have been challenging for you all and you are navigating uncharted waters. Through this challenging time we have all suffered, but today I'm here to speak out on behalf of the children and what they are going through. As of now and the plans you have indicated, mask wearing will be optional in the Lacey Township School District unless required by the federal or state government executive order. My concern is that unless required by federal or state government executive order. So what happens when Governor Murphy states face masks must be worn in school or on the bus? As per FDA, face masks are designed as experimental for emergency use with no long-term safety trials for daily use. Masks add no advantage of protection for children, but they certainly have a negative impact on all of our children. For my eight-year-old daughter, she wears glasses, so when she has a mask on, her glasses will fog up and then she will take off the glasses, because if she doesn't, she gets a headache. Her eye doctor has confirmed that it is very bad for the development of her eyes to not wear the glasses. In order for her to get the education she deserves in the classroom, we made the difficult decision to continue to send her to school, but not without a daily struggle. Due to the headaches that the face mask caused her, she also suffered with severe anxiety and fear of going to school, which battled all year. In my office this past year, the children who are being seen are suffering due to the ramifications of wearing a mask. They cannot see facial expressions behind a mask, and due to this, they are not getting the feedback they need from their teachers. A smile from a teacher helps kids to feel safe and secure and develops bonding, which is important for many students in order for them to learn to their full potential and for some to even get them to go to school. It is proven that when you smile at children, it releases hormones that can boost brain and overall development. For young children, elementary age, teachers are missing out on the ability to catch speech delays. Children in the elementary grades are not learning how words and sounds, words sound because it is muffled behind their teachers' masks. The list is endless and I could go on and on, but clearly the risk of serious side effects suffered by our children outweigh the perceived benefit of continued mask wearing. In addition to the mask wearing affecting our children this past school year, the schools were open with a number of other detrimental protocols in place, to name a few, social distancing, which included no lunch, recess specials in the classroom, and keeping dividers on their desks. In addition, we kept children home for 14 days after exposure to a person who tested positive. The schools were virtual, hybrid, virtual, then in-person, but only if you did not get exposed. One day kids are in-person, the next they are virtual, what has all this done to our children? These protocols that may have been necessary short-term and the long-term have had detrimental effects. I can tell you what I have seen in my office on a daily basis. They are suffering with feelings of helplessness, hopelessness, depression, and anxiety. The children no longer want to go to school and grades have dramatically declined. I have seen honor students with straight A's going to failing all their classes, their drive, motivation, and purpose has been destroyed, and most importantly and alarming is the amount of suicidal youth I have seen in my office the past 16 months far exceeds the total number I have seen in my 18 years in private practice. Let me say that again, the number of kids that I saw that were reporting suicidal ideation with a plan and intent from September of 2020 until present day is more than I have seen in the past 18 years. Are we going to continue with these protocols in place knowing the serious and possibly even tragic ramifications it is having on our youth? I know you feel your hands are tied, I know you agree with everything I'm saying. I had to really drive home to you all the serious ramifications the masks and protocols are having on our children, because it's now more than ever that we need you to stand up for the youth of our school district. It is time that you put aside what the guidelines are from Governor Murphy, Department of Health, Department of Education, and do what is ethically right for our children. The guidelines no longer have any scientific justification. Children are unaffected by COVID with an infection fatality rate of virtually zero. This is an established scientific fact recognized by the CDC. The Board of Education has the power and the ethical obligation to make the change in the school policy to protect children from harm. Regardless of what Governor Murphy states regarding masks, we are depending on you to make a return-to-school plan that includes masks optional, setting that parents are medical advocates for their own children, and will decide what is in the best interest of their returns, of their children's health. There is no reason why the return-to-school plan for fall should not say return to normal. You are responsible for making the decisions for the families and students in our school district. I beg you to make the best decision for our children. If the liability falls on you, so does the ability to make an ethical decision based on true science. Most importantly, you must recognize the patients in Lacey, the parents in Lacey Township have every right to make decisions for their own children, and each and every child has a right to an education without physical and psychological harm.
Thank you, Dr. Granato. I'm going to ask Dr. Clark to address where we're at right now with the masks.
So thank you, Dr. Granato, uh, you and I have had some really good conversations. Um, I, you know, I I certainly don't want to speak for anybody up here, but I've had many conversations with our board and I don't think anybody disagrees with you. Um, the plan that's on our website right now is going to change, we just haven't had a chance to change it yet because things are changing every day. With that said, uh, as you all know, the last three weeks of school, uh, masks were optional, um, and we did that um under the direction of the governor for excessive heat. But we all know that it wasn't that hot the last few days of school, and yet we still kept our masks optional. Again, I don't want to speak for everybody that's up here, but right now, we have every intention of starting our school year pre-COVID, normal, cafeteria open, masks optional, full day. With that said, um, we certainly are going to keep an eye on things, um, data specifically, because anything can change, right? We don't know what the fall is going to look like, we don't know what flu season is going to look like, and that's where we're going to rely on the experts. That is not our area of expertise, but it is our intention to open school in September as normal as we possibly can. So thank you for that, I appreciate the dialogue, I appreciate all of the work that you've done to provide us with data, um, but not only you, Dr. Granato, a lot of parents have reached out to me, have reached out to board members, um, have reached out to Mr. Zalinski, to our administrators, and we take all of that into consideration. Um, so there is nobody sitting over here more than me um that wants to open school under normal conditions, and we will work triple overtime to make sure that happens, so thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Miss, go ahead, Mrs. Brandt. No, you're good, you're good.
Good evening, Colleen Brandt, Eagleswood Avenue, Lenoka Harbor. Um, as many of you know, both my husband and myself are both alumni of Lacey High School, as are both of our sons, who both went through the wrestling program. My younger son, Jackson, is a recent graduate, 2020, and is currently a collegiate wrestler. Um, he's also one of the first of the high school wrestlers to have benefited from having the dedicated wrestling room, which many may not know, just occurred in 2015. And we were among the last schools in the entire state to have a dedicated room. I cannot tell you the pride that my son felt to be among a team that had a dedicated room, and I personally believe that finally having a home and a room to call their own has contributed, at least in part, to the success of recently of the program and to the growth of the program, which is exploding at every level, as has already been said, and with girls wrestling, which um, as already been said, and with girls wrestling, which, as Mr. Graham, right, Graham, touched upon, is something that finally is happening in Lacey as well, and he talked about the growth. What many people don't know is that girls wrestling is the fastest-growing sport in the entire country, and many say it's actually helping to save some college sports because it's helping to balance the Title IX issues. Because if you have to lose a team, just bring in women's wrestling, and now you've got it balanced out. So, even though my sons have graduated, I was very involved in the wrestling program at the high school level for nine years. All four, all four years for my older son, the gap in between, and then with my younger son. I'm not going anywhere. I always say, everything I do is for the boys, and they're all my boys. So, as someone who's very invested in the program, my concerns are, one, the continued growth of the room that is much needed, and a permanent room, and now with this issue that's arisen, making sure that there is a temporary location for the programs to continue. Because the saying of "summer wrestling makes winter champions" is not a cliche. It is true. Summer and offseason wrestling is extremely important to the success of the individual wrestlers and to the team as a whole. So, I know you touched upon it, but I just wanted to stress how important it is to the program to make sure that there's a long-term, permanent room that is expanded to go with the growth of the team, and that while this issue that has arisen is explored and hopefully it turns out to be nothing, that, but if it is, obviously it will have to be remediated, and so that, obviously, those are concerns of ours. But as someone whose son did just graduate and wrestled in that room for five years, obviously, this issue does raise some concerns for me. So, I have two, there's two questions I have. One of them is, what led to the belief that there was, and I understand it's a possibility, but what, what led to the belief of this possible issue, and when did that belief arise?
The, the other night at a facilities meeting, Mr. Peters was in that room years ago. Mr. Peters, could you please address that?
So, years ago, prior to me coming on the board, I was employee for the district for 18 years. I was also a graduate of the district and graduated in 1984 and did wrestle for Mijiri. So, I'm a big advocate of wrestling, trust me.
I know that.
So, let's start off with this. That being said, when I first started working at the alternative school with the alternative students, we were off-campus. They brought us back to campus, shut our program down. They put us in the mat room right now, the wrestling room right now. That's where I was located. I was able to start a program in there called Construction Technology and How to Fix Anything, and students would come down. We built a small house in there. There was a three-bedroom ranch in there. We were doing repairs, a whole nine yards. That was the curriculum. They actually let me write the curriculum for the program. So, while we were there, then I left that program and went into the actual wood shop. But going back, as a student here, there was a class in there called Power Mechanics, where you would go in there, work on lawnmowers, work on engines, and a big...
One of my best friends built his Grand Torino there. I know about it.
Yep. So, it got to the point where the teacher, hey, I need to go. So, what my concern was, hydraulic lift in there, actually, came up and you work bottom of the car, done, you're back. So, during facilities committee, talking, and I want to thank you guys, nation all your work, we really, but my concern was, as I was in there, as an employee of the district, my desk was in between the two garage doors on the back wall. We built the house out front. Every once in a while, I would walk in, get a little oil stain on the ground in there. Next to my desk, where one of the cylinders were, that lifted the car. So, during facilities meeting the other day, Mr. George and I were talking and looking at all the different options and what, blah, 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 and it just came in. I'm like, you know, did we ever address the oil leak in there, problem there with the floor? Like, talking about, well, he wasn't here back, correct? Zalinski was my supervisor at the time, and when I brought it to his attention, he wasn't sure not if the custodial assessed that issue. I'm thinking, okay, wait a minute. Now we've got masks, possible oil issue? That's not good. Right away, Mr. George, you know what? Shut them down, do a survey, find out what's, guys got them coming, how many days? Twenty seconds? So, we're all over. Best we can. I'm an advocate of wrestling, trust me. Well, we want to make sure that the room, that the right man inspect the room, make sure it's done. All we're, we're not looking, program, not looking to remove the room. I think we'd make an awesom- gotta get some meat in there so they can sweat. I'd like to see some heavier, stronger. I hope that's in your plan. So, but I just had a concern, the ways things were going about, about. I can probably shut down. Hey, the room isn't safe. I mean, gotta make sure that.
All right.
We have a shut. Looking at it, thinking back to say, hey, oh, guys, we've had to make sure that. I got my, I'll use my teacher voice, they don't need that. So, we're making sure that everything we have to, as a school board, make sure that everything is done. All that just has.
Thank you, Mrs. Brandt.
Thank you.
All right. You forgot your foot? Is there any other public comment at this time? Yes.
The issue is, for me right now, is that as a rec program, we donated the money for the first room, which was put together with everybody's blessing.
What year was that, you might ask?
2015.
And how much did you donate? Do you know off the top of your head?
What's that?
How much did you donate?
When Bob and I took over the program, we was basically broke. We built up our funds. We donated those funds back to the school. With the auspices that the younger kids that we were bringing into the program would have a permanent room that they could use all year round. Originally, we were getting kicked out of the Milpon School for basketball, adult basketball leagues, you know, all kinds of reasons. We were kicked out constantly. We got the room, we got it set up, and we've been building this program up, and we have a giant funnel. For you to have a good high school team, you need a feeder program that continuously has a large volume of kids, because there's going to be a lot of kids that come in, find they don't like it, they realize it's not for them, it's tough, and all these kids have come through this feeder program. Last year, out of, what, 13 wrestlers? Bob? Twelve of them came through our program? You know, all these kids are coming through this way. We need that space to continue what we're doing. I understand you're giving us the cafeteria for the summer. When I hear oil and remediation, I hear years. That's what I feel like, and I'm pounding right now because I just, I want to know what you guys are going to do to give us space, a permanent space in the home. Every other team in this school has a dedicated spot. The football players have, they've got two fields to play on. The softball players, they've got space. Everybody has their own space except for us. We finally begged and pleaded and got you guys to give us a spot that nobody was using. Nobody even looked at. We took it, we fixed it up, we made it right, and now we get an email that says we can't even go and use it for the summer. These kids were screwed for a year and a half. They, we were practicing in fire stations. We were doing anything we could to keep these kids on a mat and busy and out of trouble. This needs to continue. I understand you're going to give us the gym or the cafeteria till September, and I hope to God we're back in school full-time in September, and these kids are back in school with no mask and doing everything that they need to do, but then what happens in September when the room still isn't finished? Where do we go then? What do we do with all the rec kids? We've got a dozen kids here that can't get up to club. They're working. I got, this kid, Red, he rides his bike to practice. We pick him up. How many guys have I given a ride to Shorting at one point or another, or in Ternan, or anywhere? We need something local. We need a space here that the rec kids and the younger kids can use, and the high school kids that don't have the ability to get up to these other places. They need a place to go. I'm begging you, give us some kind of space that we can have permanently in September. If the room's not done, give us the oxygen. It's got to happen, guys. We need something.
This is not a comment time. We will take your suggestions, and we have a facilities meeting coming up, August 2nd.
Can you commit to giving us space?
No, we cannot commit. We will do the best. Safety is of importance, as you know. We will. We all are advocates of wrestling, and we all will commit to doing the best we can.
I think the comments that were on Facebook as far as fundraising with being unsafe, I think that might have been taken out of context by a few people. I don't think that's, we're saying the room is unsafe. We're saying our numbers are growing and we need more room.
Okay, and we don't run the board by social media, so we, we, but thank you, Mr. Kuhn. We appreciate your comments.
My name's Bob Schinder. I live at Bob White Court in Forker River. I've been around wrestling in this program for probably 15 years now. I've watched the program go from 20 kids in the youth program to 120 kids. I've watched the high school team flourish for many years in spite of some of the things that they had to deal with. My older son competed here when they were wrestling in the, well, now weight room, and it was a chore for them. Roll mats out every day, wrestle in a cold space, never get warmed up, never get stretched out, and they dealt with it. When he graduated, I had no dog in the fight, but I wanted to be involved in the program, and I began to contact, at the time, Sandy Brower, about the fact that we were the only school in the short conference that didn't have a wrestling room, and that I wanted to do whatever I had to do to facilitate getting a room dedicated for our program. As it turns out, I'm sure you guys are going to probably say that the space that we're in now was not constructed correctly, and I'm hoping that what we're talking about with oil or whatever it might be there doesn't render us homeless, but I think I was told by somebody that's sitting up there that I'm overly negative. My overly negative self seems to think that we're going to be homeless in a very short time. Sorry, I'm really passionate about this stuff, and I just, we can't be in the cafeteria. I don't even, not even the youth kids. You know, you, you guys do us a great favor by allowing youth program to wrestle in the school. I'm not even talking about the youth kids. I'm talking about our high school kids. This team that we have this year cannot wrestle in a cafeteria. It cannot happen. I don't care if we don't have the wrestling room. You have to give us the oxygen. You have to give us a home that they can call their own so that all the work that they've put in since the time they were six years old can come to fruition, and they can find, I mean, again, after last year, it's the least that they deserve. I am prepared right now to say, if the area that they're in is no longer going to be able to be used for wrestling, which, again, my overly pessimistic self seems to think that that might be coming down the pipeline, that I will help raise however much money needs to be raised. There's a ton of land out there. There's a lot of green grass. There's a lot of people that we know that can pour concrete, that can do HVAC work. My building that my business is in is a steel building. They're cheap. Maybe we enter into the idea of putting up a steel building outside the school for these kids to wrestle. Whatever it is, I, I just want to say, I don't, I don't even need you to say anything to me, these kids can't be in the cafeteria come September. Just can't happen. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Schinder. Any other comments?
R.J. Rollick, Llewellyn Parkway. One of my son Colin, who graduated this year from the wrestling program, will be going on, on because of what this program is, but talking with Bob and Bill and seeing their passion, they need a home. And baseball players have Clune Park, soccer players have Gillie. Everybody has a home. One of the things that I want to go, and I know we could talk, we could beat this room up, but one of the things I want to bring up is going back to five, six years ago. Kids made accomplishments in wrestling and other sports in middle school. Banners were never changed. I spoke to the previous superintendent, Mr. King, I offered to pay for him. I'm talking soccer. I'm only going to talk for my son and Vinnie Segley, because that's the only class I know, but I know we had other kids. We had, Colin went undefeated that, that year. Vinnie Segley went undefeated that year. There's no recognition, and I know it's middle school, but there's no home for these kids. There is something, you know, that you, they walk into other gyms, you walk into Brick Memorial, middle school, youth wrestling, youth program, and there's all the kids' accomplishments. Yeah, okay, what, what you doing, you, is you, but it's not, just going over, this program needs a home. And that room, I know, meant a lot to Colin and a bunch of the other kids to have their name on the board, or to see other kids' names. If they, they didn't get their name up there, but see, there are other teammates on that. That's what they need. I mean, every school we go into, we wrestle, man, he's been in the program since five. You know, you walk into these middle schools. I mean, high schools are blown out with, with banners and all that, but you walk into these middle schools, and there's all these kids' accomplishments. You walk into Brick Memorial, they actually have, Brick has their different push-ups, physical achievements, push-ups, pull-ups and all of that. We don't have that for these kids. And it's something, you know, and I, and I dropped the ball because I was really, I swore, because soccer won that year, wrestling did very well that year, and I was going to push it. Colin got to high school, and I kind of dropped the ball. I'll be honest. I, I moved on business-wise, but that's just something I, I was very passionate. I had numerous conversations with the principal over there for these kids, and actually even, you know, that's just something. So, a room, I could tell you how much it meant to him that this room was, was theirs, and Coach Visser was the fir-, first coach in there, and then, you know, that's their home, and that means everything. That's their family to these kids. So, whatever we could do, let's find a space for them. Whatever we, wherever we, if we have to build one, I've been trying to build a building in this town for 15 years, had a bunch of boards with little... I've been trying to build a building in this town for fifteen years. Set on a bunch of boards with Little League. We had, we had land back in Cloon, you know, just to have a rec center for these kids. Multiple rec centers, baseball, wrestling, whatever we wanna use. We've never really moved that ball. But at the high school level, I think we need to have this. So I just wanted to say that and I wanted to bring up, you know, the accomplishment. And honestly, they might've changed the middle school. It's my fault. I haven't been there and I've been saying with COVID, I've been gonna go over there, cause I was gonna actually set up with Mr. King and have a conversation if it wasn't done. But, um, that's all I really have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rollick.
Watch me get off there, there's like a step. Just be careful when you're done speaking.
Hi, I'm Warren Murphy. I live on Ditten Lane. I just want, you guys come here every month and do this. My goodness, thank you. You know, uh...
Oh, that was very kind. You're welcome.
Well, you know, I've been thinking, I'm not here for wrestling. I didn't want Dr. Granado to be the only one to speak on behalf of the masks and medical freedom and all that stuff. And I certainly appreciate what Dr. Clark said about, you know, the intention to open school maskless as normal as possible. Uh, but I have real fear that the, um, the government is going to overreach again and is going to mandate that our children are masked. Uh, the, the truth of the matter is, is that small kids, you know, zero to seventeen, have about a zero point zero five percent chance of succumbing to COVID. But the effects of the masks and the distancing are obviously a real, a real issue. Dr. Granado pointed a lot of those out. So, you know, I've been, I feel like, you know, we as citizens, me especially, we've been asleep at the wheel. You've obviously, much less, since you got elected to a committee and you come here every month, so I appreciate that because I feel like we've gotten ourselves into a situation where there is a lot of government overreach. I think that, um, I really wasn't a history buff. I was much more of a, I'm a science teacher. Um, but in these last, this last year, I've kind of been studying some history. And, um, you know, looking at the constitution and the intention of that, and when the people wrote the constitution and we created the states and the states created the federal government, the federal government's intention was to be limited and to protect our rights for freedom and liberty. Liberty is freedom and happiness. Um, and I don't really feel that free or happy these days and the, the thought of November coming or December or the winter coming and having to choose between sending my kids to school and to mask them for an entire school day in a mask that might be fresh, I wash them every night, but they're doing studies now that are showing the, the bacteria count on these masks and, and, um, I'm just not comfortable with that. So I guess my point is, I know that your hands are tied in a way, but when our government is overreaching so much and I think we just need to leave the decisions for medical, medical decisions, whether you wanna get this experimental shot with no long-term safety studies on it yet. Um, there are a lot of, there's a lot of information coming out now about how devastating it is to some, some younger people with the myocarditis and stuff coming out like that. Uh, so I, I really want to advocate for provincial freedom to choose what we'd like to do with our children. I, I think that masks should remain optional. I think that the vaccine should remain optional, especially under the fact that no long-term studies have been done. And again, like I, I certainly appreciated your comments and I, I see hope for that, but I just wanted to, um, again, echo what Dr. Granado said and make my advice.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else? Mason. Our new representative.
I'm Mason Heck. I live on Elwood Street. And I've been a part of the Lacy Wrestling Program since I was five years old. That's been over ten plus years. And I remember when I heard that we were getting our own room, how excited I was. We finally didn't have to spend thirty minutes a day rolling out our wrestling mats in the milk bond in a freezing cold gym. You know, it finally told me we all had a home, like we could all just go there, hang out before practice, didn't have to worry about stuff, and we could all wrestle. We could do whatever we want. It was our room. And to have us taken away, it's just really disheartening, like how, we already had our season taken away last year. And now going into this year, we're not even able to wrestle preseason. It just takes away the morality of our, of our team. We're such a, like, tight team and having this room was able, uh, let's share space together. And I just wanted to comment on how it made us feel, cause I felt that having a student's view would be a little more...
It's wonderful to have students speak. Thank you, Mason. Anyone else? Yes, go ahead.
My name is Matt Kuhn. I live at Owafu Drive. I'm gonna be a junior this year. I'm currently wrestling for the high school and, uh, I just wanted to say that I remember in middle school, I was, you know, I always thought that, um, kinda nobody really cared about wrestling, but, um, and then when I got up to the high school, I, like, I was a varsity star as a freshman and, um, I remember going to like all the, like, the section titles and like all the big matches we had and seeing everybody in the crowd and seeing that people in this town actually cared about wrestling. And, um, I just wanted to say, like, if you guys give us the opportunity with the new room and everything, we're gonna accomplish the goal of becoming, getting a state sectional title and, um, like, we're just a family here. Like, we hang out with everybody, like, we, like, sorry. We're just a, a big family and, uh, I promise you guys, if, if we get this room that, uh, we're gonna accomplish great things as a team and you're also gonna get good student athletes and, um, I mean, like, good people coming out of this program. I know Coach Bones, freshman year, he changed my mentality, like, he completely brainwashes you and just... In a, in a good way, in a good way.
Yeah, I need him.
I'll give you my address later, okay? I got a couple I need.
He'll help you focus on what really matters and, and you'll just, it'll, with more kids, a bigger room, it means more kids and that means more good students, good people coming out of Lacy Town High School. And that's all I wanna say.
Thank you so much for speaking. Okay, is there anyone else? Anyone else at all? Okay. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming. We really appreciate all of you coming. Um, we will have a meeting coming up and discuss it with the coach and some other key players. And, um, we're advocates for students, just so you all know. Um, at this time, we're going to conduct our regular business. We're going to give you three minutes to exit if you don't wanna stay. Um, if you... But we, we would love for you to stay, um... You may go, yeah.
You all need to stay. Go back to...
These are set to, like, get a wide pattern, so getting up into it, like...
Yeah, shit's set, like so.
Like your ears out?
Yeah.
Do you have to adjust that? Whenever they force you to do it.
Very good presentation, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Guys, you're all by yourselves now.
Yes, I believe, uh, we are good. Thank you.
I love, we'll chat again. Yes, safe home.
John, you want me to walk you out? Try to be a gentleman.
Enjoy your trip and try to tell us how you keep yourself under a, you know, restraint.
I'm driving, you gotta stay awake.
I would drive room.
Got it, Rick? We good?
No, we're making one.
Mr. Polino?
Will we leave the cookies in the other room?
I gave them to Mr. Polino.
We are going to continue. At this time, we are going to start, Mr. Peters, please, with the policy report.
Oh, you got me off guard.
I know, I was gonna do spotlight on graduates, but...
Standby, standby, hang on.
Mr....
Get me, go to somebody else.
Mr. Polino.
Oh, I'm good.
Okay. It's too... Okay, okay, you thought it was, okay. Mr. Peters.
So, uh, we had a policy meeting on July thirteenth and, uh, Mrs. Sennett couldn't make it and Ms. McAvoy stepped in. We discussed the Every Student Succeed Act. That was a revised program from Strauss ASME. Uh, we talked about the American Standards Academic Assessments Accountability. We're abolishing that one because there's a new one replacing it. Uh, we discussed, the big one that really concerns me is the grading system. So currently, right now, our students for an A is a ninety-two to a hundred. And it works on that type of scale. So what we're doing is changing our grading policy to revision. And we're doing this to collaborate with local colleges and other schools. We're only one of the other schools in the area that, um, don't follow the same grading system. So now it's gonna be ninety to a hundred, eighty to ninety, seventy, eighty, and so on. The one thing that we are keeping, we spoke earlier before, um, Ms. Klaus brought it up. It's a, uh, a fail-safe program. So let's say a student comes in first part of the school year, does do nothing, sits, and earns ten points. If that teacher gives that student ten points, there's no possible way they're passed on that class for the year. There's no possible way mathematically that they're gonna pass. So what we're doing, we have now, uh, the lowest possible grade you can get the first part of the year is a sixty. Right? Now, some of the board members felt that, uh, we're giving, letting the students earn something, get something they didn't earn. And I have same feelings too. But with the COVID aspect, the kids have not been in school. We're gonna implement this for the first part of the year. Mr. Zalinski is gonna keep track and records and report back to us and inform us how many students actually use that fail-safe problem. So if the kid in reality are under thirty, the teacher can't give him a thirty, they have to give him a sixty. At that point there, we're gonna reconvene and look at that and see where we're at. Obviously, we're implementing this for September. The following year is where we're gonna look at what we're gonna do with that system or not, that fail-safe system. I know I and Ms. Klaus myself are a little touchy on it because of the fact we're, that's not how life is. We're supposed to be teaching life skills. You don't get something if you don't work for it, right? Makes sense? Well, these kids have been out of school for a long time, reading from computers, no interaction with teachers, so this year we plan to implement that program. We're gonna revisit it and look at it for next year. Um, we also did revisions on P four one two five Employment Support Staff Members Revised. P six three sixty Political Contributions Revised. And my last page, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Polino, could you give the curriculum report, please?
Sure. So, uh, on Monday, the twenty-eighth, um, the curriculum committee met. This is, uh, Mrs. Downing, Ms. McAvoy, myself, Dr. Clark and, uh, Mr. Zalinski. So, um, a bunch of things were discussed there. You know, Mr. Zalinski, you know, shared with the committee that he's starting to orientate, uh, orientate himself with um, all the stuff that he's picking up from, um, with, uh, Mr. Decker's departure with the guidance and, and revamping, uh, the guidance department, so he's, uh, moving forward with that. Uh, we also discussed the grading policy as, uh, Mr., um, Peter said. Um, Mrs. Zalinski recommended, uh, the purchase of a module related to, um, uh, Lincoln software, allowing electronic tracking and documentation of students, um, in our district. We also talked about the Summer Richmond Program. At that time, there's about two hundred and seventy students that were enrolling in the, in the program. What are we up to now, over three hundred?
Over three.
Yeah, that's great. Uh, we also discussed the, uh, Credit Recovery Program. At that time, uh, during the, the, uh, the meeting, Mr. Zalinski said that there's about eighty students were enrolling in this credit recovery program, uh, with students taking one or two classes each. Um, we also spoke about, um, Special Education. Dr. Clark led a discussion on the recent passage of law by the state, um, offering additional, um, uh, compensatory services to our, uh, students with disabilities beyond the age of twenty-one. So the new law is, uh, because of what's going on with the pandemic and stuff, uh, for the next three years, I believe, we're gonna be allowing our, our, uh, special needs children going, um, to the age of twenty-two. That's correct? And, um, at that time, we wasn't sure if there's going to be funding, but we were told tonight that, um, that there's going to be funding for, uh, this program, which is, which is great. And I think we also spoke about the mask mandate. Dr. Clark spoke about that. You know, we're also, uh, you know, we, we do agree with, with a lot of the, the, what the parents said tonight and stuff, so we, we're, we're definitely on board with the opening up school as possibly can be as normal. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Polino. Mr. Scanlon, can we have finance and facilities, please?
Okay. Uh, at the finance committee, we, uh, the first thing that came up was the project for the upgrade of the fire alarms in all six of the schools is on temporary hold due to unforeseen issue with the project. All schools, however, just everywhere to keep in mind, all schools do have and will continue to have a proper alarm system while the issue is being addressed. Uh, the finance committee also discussed the, um, the, the district purchasing manual for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Uh, this, of course, is the, uh, this provides guidance for all staff members as to proper procedures and practices for all purchases to ensure full compliance with local, state, and federal codes. Uh, we were also presented with a report from Standard and Poor's. Uh, the new report came out and it shows that the district rating has been upgraded to an A-plus. And this is due to the positive financial performance that has been, uh, has led to an improved, to improved reserve levels, as important, of course, for any of our financial dealings. In the facilities portion of our meeting, uh, Mr. Peters and myself addressed, um, the, uh, discussion concerning the exterior maintenance of the district buildings. And Mr. DeGeorge presented a list of summer projects for all school buildings, including, which included, uh, deep cleaning throughout, uh, every building and then various repair and replacement projects uh, to get us ready for September, so that we're fully prepared for opening in September. And, uh, that is the, one of the primary things that we discussed. And, uh, that is the, were the primary things that we discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. At this time, Mr. Polino, you have a spotlight on graduates for us.
I do, I do. Thank you. So this month's spotlight on graduates is going to be out of the class of two thousand sixteen. It's gonna be Daniel DeAngelis. So I'll read a little biography here. As a second graders, as a second grade student at Lynn Oak Harbor Elementary, Daniel wrote, "When I grow up, I, I will be an airplane engineer." Fifteen years later, he's realizing that dream as an advanced research engineer at Honda Aircraft Company. Daniel grew up in Lynn Oak Harbor section of Lacey and completed primary, secondary school in the Lacey Township School System. In high school, Daniel participated in a variety of extracurricular activities, including the math team, physics, robotics club, tennis club, drama club. Daniel always knew he, he excelled in math and science, but gained a true passion for engineering Mr. Sotero's computer aided drawing and design, AKA CAD. Further explored his interest in the STEM Academy in senior year. As a high school student, Daniel also gained a passion for teaching by tutoring his friends and other students through the National Honor Society Program. After graduating from high school in two thousand sixteen, Daniel went on to pursue his bachelor's degree at Rensselaer Poly, Polytech Institute. Here, he majored in mechanical engineering, minored in electrical engineering, and maintained a perfect four-point GPA. When not studying, Daniel spent most of his free time in line skating or at the on-campus radio station. In college, Daniel was able to continue to express his love for teaching as a teaching assistant. He also gained valuable work experiences and internship positions at the boat company Viking Yachts and the own motive company Board Warner. Following his undergraduate education, Daniel pursued his master's of engineering degree at Cornell University. Here, he took on more teaching responsibilities as a graduate teaching assistant and concentrated, concentrated his studies in his interdis, interdispli, interdisplanary engineering. Say that three times, Dr. Clark. You laughing at me? Area of Control System. Uh, after working on vehicles for the sea and land in, in his internships, it was time for Daniel to take on the Two to Sky. During the second and final semester of his master's program, he landed a job at Honda Aircraft Company, where he is now working on automatic flight controls and electromechanical systems. Daniel remains grateful for his faculty at, at the Lacey Township High School, who steered him in a direction that allowed him to achieve his childhood dreams. Congratulations, Daniel. You made us proud here and your family, uh, and best of luck to you. And his highlight will be posted on the website.
Yes, and Daniel's dad is here with us tonight. Congratulations on raising a great kid. Congratulations for all his accomplishments.
Can you say interdisciplinary three times?
Interdisciplinary.
Yeah, I got it. See that? Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, at this time, we are going to have board comments. Mr. Peters, we're gonna start at that end tonight. You're first.
Just a warning.
For the warning?
You wanted a warning.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Zalinski for the new position. Sure, he's gonna do well over there. Um. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Enjoy your sorrows. Getting late.
Okay, I, I agree. Okay, Mr. Scanlon.
Uh, congratulations to Mr. Zalinski. And, uh, this, this new policy that we, uh, are going to be implementing tonight with the safety net, we did discuss it, uh, during the, uh, agenda portion, and there was nobody here to hear it. So, uh, just reiterate that. I do think that, uh, in a system where we only have two marking periods, we have to be very careful about what grades we do give, uh, students in the first marking period, especially a grade that would prevent them from having any hope of passing. And that we have to be able to give them a path forward from, uh, from poor grades, from a poor start, from a, a bad situation that may have occurred, uh, that just created this. Um, if they're going forward, uh, they have to have an opportunity to be able to increase that grade. And if number grades are the problem, I had suggested that we look in the future maybe to letter grades because, uh, we're doing everything we can, it seems, to make, uh, Lacey High School, uh, mimic colleges so that we prepare them for college. And in college, it's pretty obvious that it's A, B, C, D, F. And, uh, not fifty or forty-nine or fifty-two. If you get that F, it's an F. And an F for a marking period followed by a C for a marking period gives you a passing grade. We have to be able to give our students that opportunity. So I'm in favor of this, uh, safety net. And I, I just want to express my reasoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Mrs. Claus.
Sure. Good evening. Um, first, I'd like to address John Paul and, uh, the students and the parents that came tonight, um, just to support the student athletes. Um, they should know that they are being heard. I know they left, but, um, we do understand and, um, hopefully we'll move forward with what they're asking. Um, I do share their passion with fundraising, um, to provide to the kids, um, to what our district is not able to afford alone. Um, it speaks volumes at our coaching staff, but more importantly, our head coach, uh, Bonatitis, was able to grow from nineteen students to fifty in just a few years. And I had no idea about the middle school. Their numbers are outstanding. Um, so although I'm not on the Facilities Committee, um, you know, I'd still help where, where I can. I can assist where I can. Um, and if anybody is sending emails, if they can just address it to the whole board, um, just so we have, uh, better communication. Um, on that note, we did have, um, one meeting last month, a revenue discussion meeting. It was just a, just a discussion. Um, Dr. Clark, Mr. Zalinski, President McAvoy, and Mr. Scanlon and myself attended. Um, a couple of things that we discussed, um, to hopefully bring in some money to the district. Uh, grant writing, um, redistricting and implementing a C pre-K program or, uh, grant-based program. Expanding OCC Academy to our out-of-student district, out-of-district students, um, either during the day or expanding night school. Um, leasing out ground space was a topic we talked about. Um, also just fundraising, um, giving back our community, um, I feel would give if we told them specifically what would be fundraising for. Um, and that would be, you know, per school, if that's an idea everybody, um, would agree on. And just encourage donations through various outside groups, um, which is exactly what happened tonight, so, with the wrestling. Um, and that's it. Mr. Zalinski said he would take the lead on checking out a few of the ideas, um, to see if it'll be profitable. And we'll have a follow-up, uh, meeting soon. We just don't have a date yet. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Polino.
Yes, uh, thank you. So I, the biggest comment I wanna make tonight is just addressing, like Ms. Claus did, our, our students and our families every year tonight. One, about the wrestling team. I don't think there's anybody up here that, that does not wanna give them a home. It's just a matter of us figuring out where we're going to give them a big enough space for them to do what they need to do. Um, and we appreciate all the outside, uh, folks that are coming in to help the team raise money and do that. Um, but just caution that, you know, we, we just can't lunge into something. We're going to have to, you know, look at the facilities with our architect and bring everything up to state code. Um, if I'm, if I'm correct there, right, the Department of Education has to approve everything that we do, uh, in order to use whatever room we're going to do. So, um, it's not gonna be a quick process, but, um, you know, certainly I know the members of the board are all on board with getting these, these, uh, you know, athletes somewhere to go. Um, Dr. Granata, uh, Granato and, and the other folks that spoke about the masks. You know, we, we hear what you're saying, and again, nobody up here on the board really wants our kids to be back in masks. So we're gonna do everything that we, you know, the staff's gonna do everything that they can to, to get this back open, um, as, as normal as possible. And with that, welcome, Mr. Zalinski. Glad you took this time. Sure. Yeah. And, uh, I just wanna thank my, my fellow board members for their diligent work over this, uh, this hot summer. And everybody, have a great rest of the summer because school will be starting very soon.
Thank you, Mr. Polino. And lastly, uh, my comments. Mr. Zalinski, welcome. Looking forward to working with a ex, an expert on curriculum. So looking forward to all your expertise to bring us forward. And to thank you to all the maintenance workers, grounds workers, and even all the teachers who are, and parays, nurses, who are hard at work in the summer. Because school doesn't end. There's so many programs going on right now. And so many children are getting educated and so many people working to keep the school safe and open. Also, I wanna congratulate Eva Colanti. Is that her last name? Colasanti. So she was on Ninja Warriors the other night, Monday night, and she advanced to the semifinals. So I think Monday night it'll be on again at eight o'clock. And she's really a warrior. She's, she's incredible, the way she jumps and lifts and does all her things. So we invite everyone to watch Eva. I think she's a, she gonna be a junior now. So it's very exciting. And they put a picture on national TV of Eva in front of our sign out front, the Lacey Township sign. So that was on TV. That was, that was exciting. Also, um, same thing with the other board members were saying, we really appreciate when, uh, the public comes out to our board meetings. Uh, especially appreciate the one woman's comment who said to the board members, she, do we do this every month? She's never been to a board meeting and she appreciated us being here. And thank you to all the parents, the students that spoke about the masks, who spoke about the wrestling room. We love to hear feedback from the community. So we appreciate everyone coming out. And my last comment is to Mrs. DeSenza. She's not here with us, but today's her sixtieth birthday. And I just wanna wish Mrs. DeSenza, who I know will be watching this, happy birthday. We will not sing to you right now, but happy birthday. Before you want to. Happy birthday, Regina. No, she did not know that, but today is the day of her sixtieth. With that being said, we are going to conduct the rest of board business. So we are going, give me one second, please. Start with number one, the minutes. Can we have a motion, please?
Motion, Peters.
Second, Polino.
Any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Numbers two and three, the list of bills. Motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Can I, uh, get you?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got abstaining on eight-two-nine-five-one-one-E one and one-seven-three-two-five-one, please.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. On to numbers four and five. Oh, I'm abstaining to number two, a payment for a law form that I'm attending. Thank you, Mr. DeGeorge.
Number two for number four. That's meeting salaries, isn't it?
No, one list of bills.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, number four and five, transfers. Motion, please?
Motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. On to number six to thirteen, finance, sale of solar energy credits, purchasing manuals, goods and services, cooperative purchases, sale or disposal of assets. The ESEA consolidated grant, the non-public security textbook technology nursing needs, and the use of facilities. Can we have a motion, please?
Motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
What is your discussion?
Yeah, the wooden chairs.
Number ten, wooden chairs, right? We're gonna hold.
Yeah, I was just about to say.
Yes.
Well, it's not that we're gonna hold them. We're going to, uh, make sure we hold on to them and, uh, see if we can repurpose those to the wood shop.
Yes.
Good word.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
I'm just confirming at six to thirteen, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Numbers fourteen to sixteen, non-resident tuition, out-of-district placement, and out-of-district transportation contract. Can we have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. We are on to number seventeen to twenty-two. Comprehensive, comprehensive equity plan, the one-to-one technology student handbook, competition cheer stunt clinic that'll be held, a field hockey clinic that'll be held, annual appointments, and three new job descriptions. Can we have a motion, please? Anybody? A motion, please.
Motion.
Thank you. A second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes.
On nineteen and twenty, did they submit a certificate of insurance? For the clinics, for the clinics?
Always.
Yes.
Okay.
Always. Uh, there is a question, I think, Dr. Clark, on nineteen to revise the way it reads.
Yes, instead of competition cheer, it's supposed to say fall cheer, and there's a distinction between the two, so we're just gonna make that correction.
Move that the board-approved National Cheerleaders Association staff clinic to conduct a stunt clinic with the fall cheer team.
Yes, and that will be corrected in the minutes.
Thank you.
Where's that gonna take place?
At the high school.
I know at the high school, but what?
I don't have.
I don't recall. Okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Roll call, please?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Numbers twenty-three and twenty-four, our first read policies and regulations and our second read policies and regulations. Motion, please?
Motion, Peters.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
Uh, yes, and on everything, and I'm voting no on twenty-six, twenty-four, the grading system. And I gave my reasons at the six o'clock meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Numbers twenty-five and twenty-six, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Motion, please?
Motion.
Peters?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. On to B, professional days and workshops. Motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Who's attending that?
Okay, so that is an annual workshop that is virtual, that it's nine hundred dollars for the entire district to go. You can sign on or sign off or attend any virtual. It's the second year they're doing it virtual. It's for all the school boards in the state of New Jersey.
Okay.
So there's like classes all day?
Yes, all day long.
So we can just pick what we want to do?
You do. You, you just sign on. It's, it's awesome. Every hour you can sign on and it's really a good.
Yeah, it's great.
Virtual event.
Now, uh, basically, we've enrolled everyone.
Yes. Nine hundred dollars is the whole board administration. It's one, one fee for everybody.
No matter how many.
Yes.
I think it's up to fifteen people or something. Twenty-five people, yeah. So the administration.
That's a two-day event, twenty-six?
Yes.
Twenty-eight?
Three days, two and a half.
It's two and a half. It ends early, the third day. All right, did we make a motion discuss? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. C, programs and curriculum. Motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. D, certificated personnel, numbers one to ten. Can we have a motion, please?
It's motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes, and I just want to welcome the new teachers that were hired and the new guidance counselor. And we're glad you're coming on board. Next, E, non-certificated personnel, numbers one to six. Motion, please?
Uh, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.